Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, November twenty six, two thousand and twenty four Tom Water City Council Work Session. And I'm just checking, I believe that we have everyone here, so I will dispense with roll call. And so our first item on our agenda is the two thousand and twenty three Sustainability Report. And from the Water Resources Department, and I think Alyssa Jones Wood is going to be presenting.
Yes, good evening. Let me just get my presentation up on the screen for you all. All right, can everyone see my screen? Perfect.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me talk at you tonight about two different annual reports that are from two thousand and twenty three. I fully recognize that we're almost done with two thousand and twenty four. It just took a while to get these reports put in place, mostly because of the greenhouse gas mission inventories associated with both of them, so travel back in time in your minds if you can to two thousand and twenty three for for this update, and of course you'll get a two thousand and twenty four update when that those reports are ready as well. I'm going to be covering two different reports. One is our Green Team Annual Report for two thousand and twenty three, and that is focused on government operations, city government operations. So our internal departments, our waste bill for city facilities, our water consumption, so on and so forth. The second report that I'll be sharing some of the results of is our Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Annual Report, and that is focused on community-wide emissions reductions focused on the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. So first I'll get into the Green Team Report. And I apologize in advance for the vast number of high charts and bar charts that you will be seeing, but I'll try to go through them quickly, so it's not too painful. First, I'm going to talk about greenhouse gas emissions. Our reduction targets were established via Resolution R two thousand and eighteen dash zero one five. Those are our shared greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. That's for community-wide, but for the Green Team, we also just assume that since those are the community-wide targets, we should be also seeking to meet those targets operationally as well. And those targets are a forty-five percent reduction in emissions by two thousand and thirty and an eighty-five percent reduction by two thousand and fifty. That's utilizing two thousand and fifteen as the baseline. And we will need to be updating these targets, and we're in the process of doing that for the new climate element of the comprehensive plan to be in line with state reduction goals to be net zero emissions by two thousand and fifty. But for the purposes of tonight, we're talking about our established goals for greenhouse gas emission reduction. So here is a bar chart of our city operations greenhouse gas emissions as estimated by a wonderful community volunteer who does this emissions inventory for me each year as a volunteer, which is wonderful. The blue lines are our total emissions and our orange lines are our net emissions. So the total emissions for greenhouse gases is what we emit, our estimations of what we emit in this terms, city operations-wise to the atmosphere that causes the global warming effect and is part of global climate change. Net emissions is that actual emissions that are going into the atmosphere minus any offsets, mostly market-driven things to kind of reduce the amount that we can say that we're putting into the atmosphere, but still the total is going there. So you can see that we've kept pretty consistent with the total emissions, but starting in two thousand and twenty one, we started to have net emissions. So we started to purchase the green power from Puget Sound Energy, which allows us to essentially offset by buying renewable energy certificates for all of our electricity use for city operations. So the remaining orange is those non-electricity-related emissions for city operations. Here's a pie chart of our total emissions for city operations. You can see that the largest portion here is our water infrastructure. And that is because that is us pumping, treating, and distributing our clean drinking water to all of our customers throughout the city, which takes quite a bit of energy. Our second largest piece of the pie is our vehicle fleet, so the cars that the city employees drive. Eighteen percent comes from buildings and facilities. It's mostly the energy, the natural gas, the electricity used to power the buildings. Other outdoor lighting, other than streetlights and traffic signals is eight percent, sewer infrastructure, five percent, solid waste, and traffic signals, two percent. So all the different things that use energy are part of this pie, and that is our breakdown, and that's consistent pretty much every year. Especially since we did the LED streetlights and traffic signals project a number of years ago, that stayed relatively consistent. So our net greenhouse gas emissions, so that's after you take out electricity essentially, because we buy these things on the right-hand side. This is a screenshot of our purchased renewable energy certificates for two thousand and twenty three. What's left after removing that is our city vehicle fleet, natural gas consumption and waste. And you can see that our city vehicle fleet of our net emissions makes up seventy-one percent, so a big, large chunk that could use some some work. And now I'll get into fleet and exactly how we might be doing some of that work. We track our fuel consumption each year. For fuel consumption, we have a two thousand and nineteen baseline. And you can see the lighter blue is our gasoline, our gray is diesel, and those are relatively consistent. And renewable diesel shows up in two thousand and twenty three for the first time. So we piloted the use of renewable diesel, which is from like vegetable oils, not a fossil source, but it has about sixty percent less greenhouse gas emissions from the tailpipe, which is good, better than the fossil fuel. We piloted in our street sweepers and found to have no issue with it. And now I'm I'm happy to say that we have replaced all of the diesel in our underground storage tanks for our fuel stations in the fleet with renewable diesel. So we're no longer using fossil diesel to power our fleet. We have a breakdown here of the different kinds of vehicles that are in our fleet. Seven percent now are electric vehicles, nine percent are hybrid. That includes like the traditional kind of Prius hybrid that doesn't plug in, all the way to the the plug-in hybrids that do. And then but eighty-four percent of our fleet remains internal combustion engine vehicles. And this one here is our first, not our first EV, we had an EV many, like a decade or more ago, a very, very early one, but this is the the modern first one that we added to our fleet. At Harbor Days, we were showing that in a car show. So in two thousand and twenty three, we did an in-house EV fleet assessment. And we broke this into our fleet of police vehicles and non-police, because the vehicles get treated differently and have a different cycle of replacement as well. So we used a tool called the Drive Tool from the Electrification Coalition that allowed us to look at all of our vehicles that are in our fleet, when they were going to be replaced, what models were like for like that that would be cost-effective. And we found that fifty-one percent of our existing fleet could be made electric. By two thousand and thirty, eighteen percent of our fleet could be made electric, but we would we would need some additional grant support. Those are mostly medium and heavy-duty vehicles that just cost a whole lot more to get electric, but there are options. And thirty-one percent would need to remain internal combustion engine vehicles. A lot of those are what we call they're older vehicles that have been replaced, but we kept the older vehicles because we had a need for more vehicles. They're non-supported vehicles is what these are referred to. So these are pretty old vehicles that we're still driving around because we have a need for them. We haven't auctioned them off or gotten rid of them, so that's why they're kind of lingering still in two thousand and thirty, because we'll have a need. Now for the police fleet makeup, I'd want a big caveat here. Electrifying the police fleet is entirely dependent on the release of a pursuit-rated police EV. There is one that's supposed to be coming out. It's the Chevy Blazer EV PPV. A lot of times with electric vehicles, we hear they're coming out, but then they don't come out for five or six or seven years. So this is assuming that it would come out. This these calculations here in the pie chart are assuming that it would come out very soon, that it would be available, that it would be on a state contract, that we would pilot one for like a detective vehicle and see how it met our needs and assuming that it would meet those needs. So this is a dreamy scenario that hopefully would all work out, but best guess. And under that dreamy scenario, forty-eight percent of the police fleet could be electrified, thirty percent would be hybrid vehicles, and twenty-two would need to remain internal combustion engine vehicles. And those are mostly the the ones that would really need to chase someone and would have operational needs that just could not be electric. So now I'll move into buildings and facilities. The two main parts of this are natural gas use and our electricity use. So this is on the left-hand side is a bar chart tracking our terms of natural gas use. You can see it went up last year. And that is because in years past, we hadn't been collecting, for whatever reason, I'm not really sure, the natural gas usage of the golf course, including the Rivers Edge Restaurant. So now you can see the the spike in it, and you can also see in the pie chart on the right-hand side that the golf course makes up our largest chunk of natural gas consumption by facility. It's my understanding that the city pays the natural gas bill as part of our lease with Rivers Edge. But in the process of doing our investment-grade audit, we did note that because of a past project, the outdoor air was disconnected. So folks in the restaurant during colder months have actually been using the stove to heat the space because the HVAC is insufficient because of a change that we had made in the past. So there's some excessive use of natural gas for a very odd cause that can be seen here as being twenty-nine percent of our electricity use. I'll get into some proposed solutions for that that oddity, because people shouldn't be using stoves to heat space for safety reasons, for the fact that it's a fossil gas, for lots of reasons. But our facilities, basically, a lot of our buildings have natural gas heating, most of them. And you can see the breakdown here where City Hall and the golf course are the largest, followed by the fire stations that use a natural gas, not only for heating and hot water, but also cooking. They're being lived in regularly. I'll move on to electricity. Same thing, we have a bar chart of past use. We have our goal for electricity. There is a Green Team goal. We're not trending in that direction. This is a total goal. We've had conversations in the Green Team about maybe putting together like a per capita in terms of employees' goal so that we can track efficiency better as opposed to total. We haven't done that yet, but it's been something that we've been talking about. And then the pie chart for how we're using electricity for city operations, by and large, similar to the greenhouse gas emissions, total greenhouse gas emissions, it's our water infrastructure to pump, treat, and distribute our wonderful, beautiful, clean drinking water, followed by buildings and facilities, streetlights, sewer infrastructure, traffic signals, EV chargers is in there, it does use electricity, but it's less than one percent. We do have a number of renewable energy projects and programs that we participate in. We have the solar panels that are on top of City Hall. They've been there for, I think, a little over ten years now. They generate about seven percent of the electricity that's used in City Hall. The solar arrays that we installed in two thousand and twenty-three at Crite's Waterfill Station and at SAP Road what is pressure-reducing valve. Those are smaller installations, but still producing three thousand six hundred and fifty-two kilowatt-hours of energy. And like I mentioned before, that gets us to our net emissions. We purchased renewable energy certificates from Puget Sound for energy for a hundred percent of our electricity consumption. And those credits come from the Lund Hill Solar Farm and the Skookum Chuck Wind Farm. And that's a picture of the Crite's Waterfill Station solar array. Okay, said I was going to get into a solution for the natural gas Rivers Edge interesting scenario here. We did a investment-grade audit in two thousand and twenty-three, and it was finished in two thousand and twenty-four, but I'm including it here because two thousand and twenty-three was most of the work that identified quite a few cost-effective projects for us to reduce emissions, reduce overall natural resource, such as water and electricity, natural gas use. And it identified four point six million dollars worth of projects. We I've noticed that two of the projects are included in the preliminary budget for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, and those are the Public Works Building Number Two HVAC Replacement and City Park's irrigation controls. That's part of the water conservation line item. So the rest of the the projects, I think, have been deferred until funding is available, and I'm actively seeking grant funding for whatever projects we can get grant funding for, because four point six million dollars is a lot of money. But this is all to improve the energy efficiency and decarbonize those buildings that were included. And at any given time, if you'd like to read the entire ESCO Project Phase One Report, I'm happy to send that over to you. Solid waste is one of the last little sectors for our Green Team Report. We have a goal. We have felt we've achieved that goal in two thousand and twenty-three, but it's been hard to measure the waste of city operations. Doing a formal waste audit proved to be too expensive. We thought about maybe doing some laser sensors in the dumpsters, and that was not approved by our sanitation. They didn't want us to be attaching things to dumpsters that might switch out, so that makes sense. So we've been trying our best to get estimates based on weight and collection, frequency of pickup and the collection unit size. So this is our best effort. This is not perfect numbers. These are estimates, but the estimates show that we are diverting about twenty-five percent of our waste and sending the other seventy-five percent to the landfill, but that we have reduced our solid waste based on the estimations from the previous year. I'll move on to indoor and outdoor water. We used fifteen point two five percent more potable water than our baseline year last year. You can see here we have the different uses of it over many years, and then the use of it total versus the goal, again, trending upwards, not in the right direction. The largest use of water is our parks and our right-of-way, and I see Councilmember Althausser's hand.
Thanks. I just sent a quick question about the solid waste slide. Twenty-five percent diverted to to non landfill and ends whether it's glass or recycling or compost or whatever. I I guess I'm just sort of curious what the the goal is for that sort of percentage. There's a goal for overall volume, but is twenty-five percent like a decent breakdown? Always, there's always obviously always room for improvement in things, but what's sort of the take on whether that's sort of on the road to meeting our two thousand and thirty objectives, or if that needs to be like augmented, we need to consider future programs that would try to achieve that?
Thank you for asking that question. We don't currently have a diversion goal, to the best of my knowledge. Green Team doesn't, nor do I know of the city having one. There is a state goal, which I will not rattle off right now because it's in the very back part of my brain. But twenty-five percent diversion is higher than the average. But that doesn't mean that continuing to strive towards greater diversion isn't the right path forward. It absolutely is. And this is all by weight, too. Cardboard doesn't weigh as much as trash, so. But and I've been hesitant to create a or to suggest a goal, but by all means, council suggests a goal for diversion because we haven't been able to get good numbers to actually track progress or establish a solid baseline.
That makes sense. So the goals for this is sort of like twofold, where if you get the pounds down, you're probably, just by warrant of doing that, you're probably also diverting away from the landfill, otherwise the pounds wouldn't be down as much.
I mean, there are some items like glasses can be quite heavy, so it's if we could have diversion goals for different particular waste streams, but again, then we would be able to, we would need to be able to measure and have a baseline to measure against. I did a request for a quote for a waste audit and for city operations, and it was more than the available budget that I had for it. I was hoping to spend ten thousand dollars or less, and it was, I think, over thirty thousand dollars, and I only got one bid. And not having a whole lot of council direction regarding waste, I I wasn't able to justify spending thirty thousand dollars for for one goal to get a baseline, but if you all want that direction, you're the boss bosses.
All right, thanks. I appreciate you answering the question.
A big fan of compost, so whenever I can work on compost, I'm happy.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
I couldn't find my thing to raise my hand, so I just raised my voice. I'm so happy to see even this much, because for years we didn't, we didn't do this. We didn't do glass or composting that I know of. And I'm not sure what single-stream recycling is.
That's everything other than cardboard and glass, so that's like paper and plastics essentially and metal.
Paper, plastic, and metal.
Like cans, yeah.
Okay. What just person, just from you having been here a while or whatever, why why do you think we're so low on this? That that we're that we're not recycling a lot?
We're recycling a lot more than the average city and significantly more than the average person by weight. So we're doing good, but it would be best to divert more away. I am unclear if Rivers Edge has glass recycling as a bar. I'm pretty sure that they would. I I seem to remember that I didn't see it in the waste schedule, so that would be one way to to help with diversion is to require the bar that's definitely making a lot of glass waste to recycle it. However, glass recycling is kind of in a weird place right now, where it's actually not being recycled for glass, for future glass bottles. It goes to concrete manufacturing to help with the the process. It's being reused more so than recycled. But that would be one opportunity, but we we're doing well, but we can strive to do better.
What it what is it that makes up most of our trash?
That's a good question, and a waste audit would tell us exactly that. Nor in house, common household trash, it's mostly food waste and a lot of plastic waste that's not recyclable. But we would have to actually go through and and inspect the bags. Bobby would probably have a very good answer for that more so than I would right now.
So well, it's good to know we're doing, you know, a bit better than than we were. I'm I'm happy to, I'm happy to see that. I just wondered where we stood with our improvement and how other comparable type operations are 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 doing. So this is helpful. Thank you.
I see another hand, and I think I heard, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the chair, Mayor.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I had two questions. One, on the recycling, though, as far as does is there really a program where the recycling is actually actually being recycled, though, because you go to the effort to do this? Is there after China didn't take the recycling anymore, that type of thing, is there really actually a place? You know, that we go to the effort to separate things, but it doesn't just get thrown back into the in the grand scheme, you know, the all into waste altogether without being separated? Do you know?
Are you?
What happens? The end game, is there what happens to our our recycling after we go to the effort to recycle it? So.
It gets recycled.
It really does.
It goes variety in different places.
Yes, there, for instance, aluminum and paper gets very easily recycled in state. Plastics normally do get shipped out for recycling out of country. Certain kinds of plastics are being essentially stored and hoarded until there's a reasonable market price, because recycling is market-based. So if it it's all based on if someone wants to buy those materials, and if the materials are quality enough, and if they're sorted well enough to make it reasonable for a manufacturer to want to use those materials. A lot of the solid waste, solid waste in Thurston County is managed by Thurston County, so they would have more up-to-date information on exactly where the different streams are going than I would. I try to get this information regularly, because a lot of the Tom Water Middle School and George Bush Middle School, I do recycling relays with them where we speed sort, and they learn about recycling, so I try to get updated whenever they ask me to do that, but things change every day because it really is truly market-based.
Okay, yeah, and I was just curious, pointed the effort, you know, because and having the instructions more clear about what things really are recyclable, especially when it comes to plastics, it would be, you know, we all assume that our plastic maintenance jars and things like that, or or like your yogurt containers and things like that. I don't know that those are really recyclable.
Dairy tubs are accepted.
Oh, I think, okay, see, that would be nice to have.
But not the lids. Yeah, there's some handy, handy tools, and and you experience this, because when you come volunteer, Councilmember Swarthout for the the waste sorting at events, give you the handout that has all the information fairly clear, but not everyone holds on to that handout all the time.
We need to have it in our own homes to make sure.
Thinking about it getting tattooed here, but again, it's market-based, so maybe that's not smart. That was a joke. I'm not really.
Well, and the other question I had, then, going back to the restaurant, are is there a plan to deal with the heating issue at the restaurant? So that's my my question. If there was a plan, I wasn't sure. I would assume there is, but when you were talking about that, it's been deferred, but how we can't continue to let them use their ovens to heat the building, so.
So the items regarding the golf course from the investment-grade audit, this this fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-five, that's to reconnect the kitchen outdoor air reheat, so that would make it so that they can heat the space without needing to do. And I will be the first to note that this was disconnected in an earlier attempt by an energy services provider to increase efficiency. So it was done with good intent, but it did not end up well. So it it would be about sixty thousand dollars to resolve that issue. And we've also added a suggestion in the investment-grade audit to perhaps for future tenants to add a gas sub-meter and maybe ask them to pay the the gas bill, or at least for us to be able to track what is from our from the different aspects of the operations. But I I, to the best of my knowledge, it's still deferred due to funding, but as soon as the funding is available.
So this winter, they're still using their stoves, ovens to heat the building, which.
It's the kitchen. It's just the kitchen. Yeah, the rest of the building is using like a normal HVAC system.
Okay.
Eileen, who who picks up your trash?
Oh, me? LeMay?
Well, you know, for years I've been on the solid waste committee, so some of these these questions are ones that get asked over and over and over. Recyclers change as the market changes and so forth, but at some time during the first of the year, I think I mentioned it, yeah, me here at a meeting. I'd like to have someone from from Public Works, Solid Waste, come and and just kind of give us a general what we're doing. You know, we have, we have a new some new things going on, and some of it relates to recycling, but I mean, a lot of it does, but it it depends on where you're in places, like in Seattle, you can do bottles and you leave the caps on.
Yes.
Or like Coke bottles and things like that, whereas here, that's not what we do, you know, so people get, people get confused. But I don't want you to be confused about the fact that things are being recycled. But we'll, we'll bring some people in to to talk to us.
Well, and there must be money to be made by recycling, because there's that, what, Redwell, there's a company that'll go out and that you can pay to pick up your recycling as well. So I, so there must be money to be made in recycling.
So I see Councilmember Dahlhoff and Councilmember Jefferson's hand up, so we'll start out with Councilmember Dahlhoff and then Jeff, Councilmember Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the one thing, I love this conversation, first of all. Second is that an update is from Department of Enterprise Services. They're looking to do a statewide contract for recycling of multiple categories. So what Joan was talking about and actually looking to do a pilot. What we're seeing a lot in the waste streams is textile of clothing and furniture and stuff, so DES is looking to do a pilot for that. So that could be something, you know, Alyssa, when these things come up, is that if there's a request or looking for funding or trying something that DES has funding, and maybe, well, we do have funding now, but maybe not in the future. But to do like a pilot, so we have right now, Lot is look is interested, has voiced interest to do a pilot for the textile recycling, so has another law enforcement jurisdiction. So that's something to consider if you don't have the funding to connect with DES for the pilots. And then we're also working with ecology and Thurston County as well. So that could be an opportunity down the road.
I love funding opportunities.
Councilwoman Jefferson?
Yes, so Alyssa, these are our base numbers, right?
These are our best estimate-based numbers.
Okay, and we're doing good and we're doing better than others. So as our base, how can we improve these numbers? So for example, for glass, can we move up to three percent? Or cardboard recycling, can we make it ten percent? So what do you need from us to do your waste audit?
Funding, but I do believe that, like Councilmember Dahlhoff was just saying, there there are opportunities with Department of Ecology, I know, for recycling grants specifically. And I think once the urban forester is on board, I'll have a little bit more capacity to take more of that on. I know that my director, Dan, has been asking me to read the Thurston County Solid Waste Plan as I prepare for next year with the urban forester being on board, so I suspect that I will be spending more time on solid waste and being more aggressive about funding opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Think this is the slide that I was I left off on reclaimed water. So we currently use reclaimed water from a lot at our golf course, and it's really good that we're using reclaimed water instead of potable water, because this gray line is just the water that we're using at the golf course for irrigation. Potable water uses a lot more energy to I mean, we don't need to be watering lawns with potable drinking water. We also shouldn't be flushing toilets with it, but that's a whole other topic as well. But you can see that we're using a lot of reclaimed water to do appropriate use for it compared to our potable water consumption. We are up in potable water consumption, that fifteen point two five percent. But at least we're we're using reclaimed water for an appropriate purpose, and it's displacing a lot of otherwise. of potable water that could be used for that inappropriately. So this is good. And we're using as much as we can get. I, we want to use more, but we have to produce more and negotiate with Lot in order to get more and then build out the infrastructure. So it's good that we're doing it at the golf course and that's a perfect use for it. Another metric that we track for the Green Team report is employee participation in the commute trip reduction program. We have kind of low numbers right now, but we have seen an uptick in it. We have six employees that are signed up for commute trip reduction, and that's for employees to commute to work using alternative means of transportation, which could be biking, walking, taking the bus, carpooling, van pooling. And actually, I think half of those employees are biking to work. And then we also have an incentive program for employees to purchase newer used, purchase or lease new or used electric vehicles or plug-in hybrid vehicles. And we had three employees take advantage of that incentive last year, and we've had more than three this year, but that'll be in next year's report. It's been very effective. It's been a good motivator. It's great. All right, that's it for the Green Team report. Now I'm going to shift gears into the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Annual Report, and this is why it's really that late because herding cats, lovely, wonderful cats that I love working with, and a new consultant to get an annual report. It took a little while, so thank you for your patience again. I realize it's almost twenty twenty five. But very important thing to note, and I think that the presenters coming after me are going to be speaking about this a lot more. Based on our twenty twenty two greenhouse gas emission inventory, we are trending in the wrong direction. A greenhouse gas emissions community wide actually went up six point six percent between our baseline year and twenty twenty two. So that's not good. There's a lot of work to, still to do, tremendous amounts of work still to do. Based on our twenty twenty two greenhouse gas emission inventory, fifty four percent of our community wide emissions, this is Thurston County, this is your home, my home, our office, the roadway, I five, all, everything within our geographic boundary that emits greenhouse gases. This is our best estimate of that. Fifty four percent comes from buildings and energy. Thirty six percent comes from transportation and then relatively equal water and waste. So that's wastewater and water and solid waste, like recycling and whatnot that we were just talking about. Fugitive emissions, that's things like refrigerants, which if you ever want to go down a rabbit hole with me offline, definitely not holding everyone else hostage for that. I'm happy to talk HFCs. I'm very nerdy about it. It's a very fascinating thing. And then agriculture, which is things like manure management and tree loss and whatnot. So that's our our pie in terms of our donut, I guess it's a donut here, of our greenhouse gas emissions. It's very similar to what ours was for government operations. If you think about water infrastructure being in the buildings and energy side because it is electricity and that's how we count it. So twenty twenty three was a big year. We adopted, or we accepted the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan in twenty twenty one, hired me in twenty twenty two. We quickly realized that the plan's implementation structure was created with the assumption that there wouldn't be people actively working on it a whole, whole lot, the staff. So we had to spend a lot of twenty twenty three regionally kind of reworking that implementation structure to make it clear. Did we all have to hold hands to do everything together? Could we work independently and then hold hands on some things? Do we have to do everything the same way at the same time? That's all been clarified now. It took a while to get through all of that and get all of that clarified and then solid signed legal documents, but that is done now and it's behind us and it's great. Now everything's clear and we know what we're doing moving forward. We formed the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative because it was kind of weird to just refer to the plan when it was people doing the plan. So now we have an easier way to refer to the actors. We held the first annual retreat of the collaborative where we selected regional initiatives. We recruited and appointed a community advisory work group. You'll be hearing from two of those members after me. We transitioned administrative tasks to a new consultant. Thurston Regional Planning Council decided to step down from their role providing administrative support, so we solicited for that and brought on a new consultant for that. We completed a greenhouse gas inventory and we created jurisdiction work program. So something that was very important for this is that we realized that it was hard for us to act, to effectively communicate to the public what each jurisdiction was doing in terms of implementing the plan. Because the assumption was that it was just what the, what we were doing together in the executive committee meetings or the community advisory meetings where we were working a lot of work papers that were all for jurisdictions, but if a jurisdiction was taking an action by themselves, that was kind of not necessarily part of the conversation, or it was a tidbit at the end of the meeting. This makes a work plan that each jurisdiction puts together for each year about everything that they plan on doing for the next year that works with the actions and the strategies in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Shows timelines, has some accountability measures to it, and really helps communicate to the public that, yes, we have these things that we do regionally together, but we also have things that we do as individual jurisdictions when it's best suited for us to work on different projects. So people can expect what to, what they plan to see coming out of Tumwater, for example. So that's the the regional coordination stuff, and now I'm going to get into some Tumwater specific progress that we have in this annual report. Broken down into those sectors or those greenhouse gas kind of chunks of the donut. We made progress on the twenty twenty four regional initiative, so that's the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance and the Electrification Campaign Pilot. We'll be bringing forward in January an interlocal agreement for the Electrification Campaign Pilot. You all already approved the grant funding that's helping fund that work. And the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance, we're still vetting and we're going to bring it to the Community Advisory Work Group next week and hoping to bring it to council in April for potential adoption or to propose it to you all. So that's progress on the buildings and energy. We've also continued replacement of LED bulbs in city facilities. That's a very light lift, but it's something that we're consistently working on. We launched an all-electric buildings webpage on the city website. And then we also participated in the switches on launch, which is honestly a better tool. But both are available so that people can have lots of resources to learn how to electrify their home. We achieved Seoul Smart Silver Designation, which is a federal program to help alleviate and reduce barriers to small residential solar. And we completed two solar plus storage feasibility assessments, one of City Hall and one of our library. And that that was especially important to me because at the time, we didn't know what was going to happen with the the regional fire authority and the city hall might have become a emergency operations center and maybe backup power beyond what we had might be needed, and our libraries are only heating and cooling shelter in town. So looking into more power generation and more storage capability was an important thing to do in twenty twenty three. In terms of transportation and land use, we began work on the comprehensive plan periodic update, which includes an update to the transportation element, but also the creation of a climate change element. Oddly enough, it's a strange way that the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan intersects with projects that you wouldn't expect. There's an action specifically about transportation efficiency that calls out roundabouts. So our I five Trosper Capitol Boulevard reconfiguration was technically a TCMP implementation project. So you can see a picture of that. No one really wants to remember that time, but it's done and it's beautiful now. We did our in-house fleet electrification plan. We added three public EV chargers, the first city-owned public EV chargers at City Hall. And we did design and grant funding and secured for multiple bike and pedestrian improvement projects, including the one that we saw this year in on Israel and on Linwood. So progress in transportation happening. In terms of water and waste, we completed that investment grade audit of city facilities. That was a big lift. We have continued to do recycling and composting at city events whenever there are volunteers available. Sometimes there aren't volunteers available, like July, July fourth and the most recent event. If anyone ever wants to volunteer to be a trash attendant, please let me know. There's sometimes events that we can't be there for because I don't have enough volunteer power. But we're still composting at city facilities. We have the compost procurement ordinance, which is being implemented by our staff. And we added in twenty twenty three rechargeable battery recycling at the cleanup drop off event, and we did it again this year. And that's available to us for free through a company that's basically recycling and taking care of all the shipping and safety for us, which is wonderful. Agriculture, forests and prairies. We held multiple public meetings about Tumwater Municipal Code sections related to trees in twenty twenty three. You all know that those were on paused due to the wild and urban interface, which was also a really important action that the city was involved in to improve that. And I understand that we have a new planner coming on next week, so hopefully we're able to start that, the tree code process, pick it back up again soon. I'm eager, the tree board's eager. We're all ready. We completed a public urban forest inventory and maintenance plan of all city properties. Brad specifically continued work on the Habitat Conservation Program. We had our annual Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, and it's worth mentioning again, our work on the Washington Wild and Urban Interface Code. That was very important for a future of of this particular sector and emissions related to it. Then the last sector that I wanted to cover is the Tumwater Sustainability webpage. When I started, it was talking about stuff from twenty twenty, from two thousand and six and nothing since then. So now we have an updated part of the website with resources that are useful, especially questions that I get asked often. And we've continued to do student internships and guest lectures. This picture here is not of an internship or a lecture, however, it is our annual retreat from last year at City of Olympia. So sometimes it's hard for me to get pictures with people in it, so this is me trying my best to have pictures with people in it. And on that note, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have, and I'll stop sharing my screen so that everybody sees each other nice and big.
Right. Any additional questions? I think we got and probably answered while you were doing your presentation, so.
I tried to be thorough.
Yes, absolutely. So I appreciate that, that, and we'll look forward to the next next update, which will be a little later in twenty twenty five, so. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alyssa. All right, so next is a meeting with the Thurston Regional Greenhouse Gas Reduction Goals and City Administrator Parks. I believe you will start this off.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have with us Tom Crawford and Stephen Bernath, and it looks like they have brought a colleague with them. Tom and Stephen are members of the Climate Advisory Work Group for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. They approached the city of Tumwater several weeks ago and met with the mayor and I. And they wanted to review a letter that they and several members of the Climate Advisory Work Group had drafted related to their concern about insufficient capacity and resource allocation for addressing climate crisis. And their request to us is that they have an opportunity to address the issue with the city council, and so that is tonight's workshop. And so Tom and Stephen, and if you want to introduce yourselves real quick and take it away.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I'm going to lead off and then Tom's going to take it for a while and then we'll switch back. Thank you, Mayor and council members for this opportunity to talk to you about greenhouse gas mitigation in Tumwater. We're both members of the CAU. I personally am sorry, I'm gonna check. Is somebody going to put up our presentation?
I was just going to ask if the city clerk's office could please put their present, share their presentation on the screen and Stephen and Tom, if you could please just let them know when you need to advance the slides.
You bet. Anyway, I'll just start with introductions. I'm a a former state employee, retired now as a forest hydrologist and worked, have worked on climate change since the mid two thousands and water quality and fish habitat. And I've been, I helped the county with their conversion ordinance a year ago last summer, and then people suggested, since I was interested in climate, to join this group and I was selected and we're really interested in talking to you about how we might increase our efforts on greenhouse gas climate mitigation. Tom, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure.
Next, next slide.
Next slide, please. Thank you.
That's good.
No, back one.
He's.
No, I'm sorry, forward. Forward another one. There we go. Perfect. So my name is Tom Crawford. I'm a also member of the Community Advisory Work Group. I've been involved in climate change since two thousand and eight. Was a founder of a group that some of you may, I think, are familiar with, Thurston Climate Action Team. I'm the current server on the board and current board president, that organization. Other parts of my background include working with indigenous and tribal communities on educational issues throughout the Pacific Northwest. Working on IT projects with state government organizations here in the state of Washington and Oregon and other parts, other parts of the country. And and through that also got involved in transportation projects. So I've got kind of a varied background. Some might call it checkered, but anyway, that's a little bit about about who I am and and my background. So I think, Tony, you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. I'm Tony Usabelli. I am the co-chair of the South Sound Group of the Washington State Sierra Club. We cover Thurston, Lewis, Grays Harbor and Mason Counties and are actively involved both locally at the state level and nationally on climate action, and I've been involved in the clean energy space as working or as a volunteer for forty five years now.
Next slide, please. Tom?
Yes, so thank you very much again for your support of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And I'm, I know that you were, this city council was one of the first, if not the first, to actually allocate some money to assist with climate change efforts. So very appreciative of that, for your early support for climate action, for, you know, discussing and reviewing and accepting the Climate Mitigation Plan, passing a resolution calling for characterizing this climate crisis as a crisis and a challenge that that I know you take very seriously. And and then also hiring staff. I think that's incredible that you've hired a person to to actually work on this among some other duties and you're actually increasing funding for that function. So I think that's really, really wonderful. And then finally, your ongoing commitment to the Climate Mitigation Collaborative, Eileen's participation in that and and your support in that in that effort. Next slide, please. So as members of the Community Advisory Work Group, we participated in a retreat. Think Alyssa referred to the twenty twenty three retreat, and there was also a twenty twenty four retreat. And during that retreat earlier this year, we became aware that of the really significant discrepancy between where we need to be to achieve the goals identified in the mitigation plan and and the targets that you all you know, committed to collaboratively with other jurisdictions. And between those targets and where we actually are. So we were very, we became concerned about that. This number says we are in fact forty percent short of the twenty thirty goal. I just want to be really clear and transparent. We expect that much of that forty percent will be made up through the progress that Puget Sound Energy, for example, is, has committed to make, and it actually is required to make through state law in the the carbon content of the energy that they deliver to us. So by reducing the carbon emissions from their their operations in pretty drastic ways, that will help a lot toward that forty percent. But even so, we, it's clear that there's a gap. We're going in the wrong direction. Admissions are rising rather than than being reduced. And so we, you know, it's important that we that we address this in a serious way. So our CAU leader letter, sorry, was was created in response to that situation. And basically, it says, we we believe that two things are necessary. We need more resources devoted to to dealing with this challenge and this crisis. And we need to relook at the focus among policymakers and among staff within each of the jurisdictions to make sure that all the decisions that we're making really help us achieve this goal. We've noticed some decisions that seem to be at odds, you know, some some policy decisions are. You know, some, some policy decisions or some zoning decisions or some permitting decisions that don't quite seem consistent with, you know, the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Yes.
I have a question. Can you share one of those decisions?
Well, for example, there was, there have been decisions about allowing for warehousing, warehouse operations. I think in Tumwater and Lacey and various communities that will increase the transportation footprint, you know, to and from those warehouses. And, and then some of that may require cutting down trees, which is one of our sources of bringing down carbon, carbon dioxide in our atmosphere. So those kinds of things seem, seem a bit inconsistent.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
I also see Councilman McCarthy has her hand up.
Thank you. Hi, Tom.
Hi, John.
I was on that first council that stepped out and said we were going to start funding you.
I remember that.
I remember your patience and your persistence and it was, it was right on. So we're still at it. We're still at it. And I'm, I'm concerned about us looking forward to some of these things with clear-eyed, maybe not understanding, but of the realization that we could be behind the eight ball even more with the new lack of funding that probably environmental attention is going to get from, from the changeover at the federal level. And so while we're talking about some of the things we still want to do or bring back, you know, to the forefront, how do you think we should be talking about funding? I mean, what are going to be our resources? Are we going to have to go different places or talk to different people? Or do you have any, have you all been talking about that? And any thoughts in that direction that we could even get started thinking or talking about?
Yes, actually, we have been thinking and talking about it. You know, some of the members of the CAU who, who signed on, developed and signed on to this letter have been talking about it. We've been talking about it within TCAT. And we've got a slide coming up that will have one or two ideas that, that may be starter ideas. But I think the bottom line is we have to, we have to be thinking, you know, way outside our, our, our normal ways of thinking about this. In terms of funding, certainly. We need to be thinking creatively, aggressively and ambitiously. And some mix of finding ways to increase local funding sources that, that are not dependent on, on the, well, I won't say whims, but almost on the, on the, on the changes in federal administration or even some changes that might take place, you know, in our state government that are less dependent on, on, and are more diverse perhaps than we thought about in the past. So that's just what I'll, I'll say right now. And then we'll have some other thoughts in a bit.
Good. Because the other thing is a lot of Washingtonians that I've talked to, not just in Tumwater, but, you know, in different interactions, seem a little bit casual at times about the fact of us being affected by climate change. You know, it starts out, boy, I'm glad we live in the Northwest where these things are not happening. And I'm saying, no, things are happening. And, and they said, well, probably not groundwater with all this rain. I said, oh, yeah, you know, groundwater too. So, so there's, there's a kind of a, we're in a good place feeling about some of the folks who live here. And we are in a good and beautiful place, but things are changing that much that we need to, we need to be really proactive about these things. And also, I had a conversation lately about, about this building over the, you know, with warehouses and, and development, that kind of thing. And people said, we need to be paying more attention to our dirt. We need to realize that it's not just emissions, but it's what have we covered up to do things that touches this balance of nature along with cutting down trees, along with disrupting large and small streams or water flows or things like that? And where, what have we done to the soil? And so I just wanted to pass those on to you because some of those are, are fairly recent conversations.
Yes, thank you for that. And, and I think it's becoming more evident that disturbing the soil also has an effect on the climate. Also, you know, it releases greenhouse gases that otherwise would, would stay locked in the soil. So, yeah, I, I think there's, all these things are related. So thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for listening. You've got enough on your plate already, but I want to go on the plate.
Well, we're all working together.
I know we are. Yeah.
So again, as this slide says, you know, we, we're hearing news from COP29. We're already at 1.5 degrees centigrade, which was, you know, back in 2015. We thought was the, the place beyond which we, we could not go. And we're already there apparently. So, you know, this is, this is not good news for us. And, and we need to, to, to think real clearly and, and carefully about this. And so our message basically is, and the message in this letter is, we need to be thinking globally and acting locally. The old saw that I think many of us have heard many times, but is definitely true in this situation. So next slide. And so this is a photo taken in Vancouver, Washington in 2021. And this gentleman is, is returning to his apartment building. And you see the sign up on the top of the building, 116 degrees. So this is the kind of thing that we're looking at. This is the kind of heat dome situation. And we experienced, maybe not quite that hot here in the Tumwater Thurston County area, but we experienced that here, you know, so. And, and, and that's not stopping and that's, that's not going to get any better for a while until we can be bringing down our emissions over a fair amount of, a fairly long period of time. On a, I'm on a permanent, on a permanent basis. So, so, you know, this, this is what we're, this is just one of the challenges that we're dealing with, as well as smoke, as well as, you know, flooding, rainfall, runoff, and then mudslides that that causes. And, I mean, and, and not to mention the, the indirect effects of, if, if people can't grow food in certain parts of the, this country or certain parts of the world anymore, or and the nutritional value of that food is going down dramatically because of the effects of heat and other effects of climate change, then, you know, that hits us right here because we, you know, how are we going to get our food? So, and, and, you know, it hits transportation, it hits other kinds of things that, that we may not think about immediately, but, but will affect us. So next slide. So I'd like to turn it over to Tony now to talk a little bit about his take on the letter and the other organizations that have also signed on to this letter.
Tom, thanks very much. I guess I would echo some of the comments that, that you've made, Tom, and maybe respond a little bit to Councilman Kathy's question about funding and so forth. I think fundamentally, the Sierra Club, as I said at the beginning, is very concerned about what we see as the, the major environmental challenge of our, of our era, and that is climate change. And so nearly all of the work that we have been doing in terms of advocacy, support and other activities has been focused in one form or another around climate change. That's one of the reasons that we signed on locally, along with the other organizations that you see listed here, the Audubon Society, Olympian Divisible, Legal Women Voters, the TCAT in that group as well. And I'd like to kind of maybe put this in, in kind of positive terms. This is a big challenge. We know that. But I also think that we are, in many ways, from a program and a policy perspective, and perhaps not a unique situation here in, in the Tumwater area in Washington State, but we certainly are in a situation where we're leading the pack in many of the actions that can't, have been taken and can be taken in, in the future. In particular, I'd hearken to the, the fact that, you know, we have this decision to say, well, we don't think climate change is a big issue. And people could have voted down the Climate Commitment Act. They did not. They voted for it in, in very large numbers. It was well over 60% of the, of the electorate statewide that voted for the Climate Commitment Act. And I was just looking at the, the numbers in terms of the projected revenue from the cap and trade or cap and invest mechanism. That is part of that. And the Department of Ecology, from their report earlier this year, estimates over the next five years that that will bring in for the kinds of projects that you are working on and others are working on around the state, between 3.8 and 4.1 billion dollars for these kinds of activities. And I think we and the other organizations that have signed on here are very interested in finding ways that we can help use those funds here locally and can stand by to, to, to help out in that space. And I would mention just a couple of specifics that the Sierra Club has done, just by way of example, not to toot our horn specifically, but many of you are aware of only community solar and the work that they've done over the years. Well, we have worked with them to encourage our members to get involved, to purchase some of the shares in there. We worked specifically with Marshall Middle School, where, you know, has done a, a very large installation of solar. And quite a number of our members contributed to doing that, along with some funding that we provided directly from our organization. Just last week, I met with the new person who has been brought on in Thurston County to help establish Energize Thurston County, to bring in new ways to improve, improve the efficiency of, of residential buildings through high-efficiency heat pumps. You're probably familiar with Energize Olympia and the work that they've been doing in that space. So I, I just want to lay those out here and say, I think we, we recognize that it's going to be the local governments, it's going to be the cities, the counties and the states that are going to be moving forward in this space, regardless of what goes on at the federal level. And I think we have tried to, in this letter, to point out that there's a lot to be done, but I think there's a, a large base here, both of individual and organizational support, as well as the ability to tap into some real financial resources to move forward on this. Tom, was there anything else you wanted me to say with respect to the letter or anything else in that, in that space?
That's perfect, Tony. Thank you. And I see that Councilmember Jefferson has a question.
Um, yes, gentlemen. I'd like to know the why. So why this letter? What are you seeing to, tell me about the decision-making for this letter? Because I see it's dated June 2024.
Right. So some of us started asking about this within the context of the Community Advisory Work Group late in 2023. And the, the reason it's dated, you know, June of 2024 is it, it took a couple of cycles and meetings for us to come together and present, you know, first of all, get volunteers that wanted to sort of organize around developing a letter. And then secondly, then to finalize that letter and then identify the people that, that really felt strongly and wanted to sign on to the letter. And by the way, 11 of the 13 members of the, of the CAU have, have signed on to this letter. So it's a pretty large majority of the group. So that's kind of how that timing worked. And I think, again, it was driven by our recognition from the 2023, or 2024, let's see, hold on. Let me get this right. No, from the, yeah, from the 2024 retreat. We saw that, that was in March of 2024. And so when those, that numbers, you know, got displayed to us, then we started to talk about it, organized ourselves around this letter, presented the letter to the members of the CAU. And then, and then we've been talking with various jurisdictions since June about getting on the agenda, you know, how best to present this, so forth. We did initially present it to the Executive Committee of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. I think that was in July. And then since that time, we've, they encouraged us and the staff of this encouraged us to present to various jurisdiction city councils. And so that's why we're here this evening. We have already talked to the Olympia City Council and to the Lacey City Council about this letter, presented it to them. And we have a meeting actually tomorrow with a couple of county commissioners that we hope will result in scheduling a similar session with the Board of County Commissioners.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Did you request the next slide?
Yes, please. Thank you. So I'm going to take it through a couple of slides here. What we're hoping to do in the CAU and also along with you all is reduce our emissions from buildings, as you saw. Buildings are a big part of our greenhouse gas emissions, also vehicles, and figuring out how to do a better job of planning our communities, providing alternative means for transportation, to work, school, shopping and recreation. I was just thinking recently, as I was getting ready for this meeting, that I had realized I used to bike a lot down through Tumwater and into the South County. But since the Chalas Western Trail and the Woodland Creek Trail has been implemented, I realize I go east now. And I hardly ever come down that way anymore. So that's just an example of how things can change. I also bike commuted to work down to downtown and out to ecology quite a bit of my career. And so I'm always looking for opportunities for, you know, when somebody, you know, if you, one of you asked, what are some of the concerns right now as far as decision-making? Well, when I see, say, a 40-acre development go in and they slick off every tree, which is not necessary. You can do a lot by leaving some of those trees for stormwater and having lesser big ponds and so forth. And that's a positive effect. And so I also ask whenever they put in a, widen a road or something, let's make sure we're not putting parking in, let's make sure there's a bike lane being put in. It's those kinds of things that I've seen. I live in Northeast County, so those are the kinds of things I'm seeing out this way. And as we build out our urban growth areas, those are things that I think we should be thinking about as we move forward. So, you know, keeping as many trees on the landscape as we can and then doing it in a way that it provides for social justice. So the economic differences throughout the community, that people who have fancy bikes aren't rewarded for having a nice trail. We also have people that need to get to work through alternate means. And we need to provide those dedicated bike lanes for them as well. Next slide, please.
Councilman Doloff, did you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Stephen, I'm wondering with this slide regarding new construction. I've been having conversations with Tessa Bradley with the Artisans, Artisans Group. And I have to say, I'm a big fan of their group because their baseline is more sustainable development, like LEED certified. Has your group looked at like options of how we incentivize types of development that are green and more sustainable? Because it'd be really cool to do like a pilot with that. Like, how do you make those numbers work and show the circular economy, the life cycle analysis that your energy, like your utility bills, everything will go down? But how do you get that to be a baseline of more sustainable and greener development?
It's a good question, Councilman Doloff. I, I don't have the answer to that. Tom can give you a little more history around the mitigation plan. I personally am some big fan of what is good. I personally am some big fan of wood is good, meaning less concrete and steel, two by fours and more wood being put into buildings. But that isn't necessarily, it's maybe inferred or hidden in the plan, but Tom, can you address that question, please?
Sure. Yeah, that definitely is addressed in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. You know, the the need to ensure that folks not only feel motivated to to do those kinds of of projects, you know, that are that are green, that are energy efficient and so forth, but also and incentivized, but also know that that's the community expectation. And there are ways that, you know, building codes and that sort of thing need to be designed to to make that clear, that that is the community expectation, and that's that's the way we're doing things. Now, in in residential, that is driven pretty much by state building codes and the State Building Code Council. And there've been a fair amount of discussion about various ways in which that can take place or should take place at the state level. There's been discussion about, you know, how do we, for example, encourage people to build electric only? Because that's, you know, with with PSC changes, dramatic changes in their carbon footprint, that's that's the potential for having clean energy, you know, go into all of our homes is through electrical appliances and and heating units and so forth. So, but yes, there are a number of factors to that. My belief is that we need a combination both of legislation and incentives to to make this a reality for our community members and for our builders and designers and 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 so forth. So and and, yeah, the the group that you're working with, I think, is a great group, and they've got a terrific history in this community.
Thank you.
Say, you know, it's always hard to be the first one to do something different, too. And so, for example, I don't know if you, any of you have ever visited, but the Bullet Foundation up in Seattle built this big mass timber building. It's a beautiful building. And, you know, we need something like that down in this community as an example of how we might do something different that is has a carbon cycle that is less impacting.
Stephen, I was just going to add to that and what you mentioned as well, Tom, the State Building Code Council received money to look at not only the enter, the direct energy use of buildings, but what's called the embodied energy. And that report, I haven't even had a chance to look at it, just has come out this month. And it's a pretty extensive analysis of what the quote embodied energy is of the built environment. And in particular, it has, I just noticed it has a number of recommendations of how that might translate into the energy code. So you might want to take a look at that. I've got it on my list, but haven't looked at it yet.
Thank you, Tony. Next slide, please. So some of the suggestions we might ask not just you, but also of the other jurisdictions. We know, for example, the Port of Olympia is interested in collaborating with communities here. And so, you know, adding to these partnerships that we've already got may be helpful in our city transit. We know that they are doing a lot of good things, trying to make their sit, their fleet more green. You know, and how, you know, whether that needs to be formalized in some way, I don't know. But again, going back to what on the second bullet, Tony suggested, you know, the Climate Commitment Act, and thank you for everybody who voted against the initiative. It's going to remain, and as a result, those selling those allowances is going to create a lot of money or state grants to be available for these kinds of things. The federal grants, as you know, and as somebody mentioned, we don't know what's going to happen with those. But there's got to be new opportunities and we'll have to, and we're we're not trying to be critical at all here. What we're trying to say is we recognize there's a need to go faster and we're here to help. And one of the ways we heard that might be helpful to you specifically is to hire a full-time grant manager. Alyssa mentioned earlier that she has a capacity issue. And so getting the Urban Forester on board, you know, and there may be a need to have a grant manager, because as you know, takes a lot of paperwork to not just spend the money on these grants, but also to do all the work to make sure that it's accountable. And then, again, this whole idea of maybe a climate lens policy. You know, can we integrate some of the policy and financial decisions we make at the low level, similar to what both Tom and I were talking about? And also, then you have to, even if you pass a policy like that, you need to train everybody to think a little bit differently in order to actually implement it. And then also, with any kind of grant that comes forward, you usually have to have some matching funds set aside so that you can take advantage of that opportunity. So having some some matching funds sitting there when these things come along is also helpful. Next slide, please. So as you all know, probably, if we're successful accelerating our progress on mitigating greenhouse gases, it helps us protect and restore clean water and air, reduces health risk, prevents disease, creates family, waits jobs, creates new business opportunities in the clean energy economy, improves social justice for the members of our community, and hopefully it shows that we care for everyone in the community. And next slide, please. So in summary, thank you for your leadership on climate thus far. Our region is not meeting our our progress goals. And we just ask you, as you go through your budget and think about policies, we ask you to look for ways to increase those resources and policies policies towards this effort. There are a lot of community benefits that will result from this work, and we are all committed to helping you with this in any way we can. Do you have any questions for us?
Any additional questions? So I, you know, we all are very engaged in this and Councilwoman Kathy?
Well, go ahead, if you're.
And, you know, and this is a priority, and we do, we do look at this. And and as we move forward with strategic planning in the future, this is always definitely top of mind for us. So so, yeah, so this is not something that's going to fall off our radar. I can just say that. So Councilwoman Kathy, did you, what did you?
Yeah, I I just wanted to ask us, as, you know, they've gathered good people together for years to to work on this. I mean, this has been a long. It's changed, you know, and is different. Well, the whole climate change has changed since 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 they began with TCAT and so forth. One of the things I wanted to ask you, when you're together in your community, talking about these this work and how you're going to do it and what you're going to challenge people to, what is your definition in your mind of climate justice? We use that word justice. And I wonder, you know, people have such a different idea about it. They they think we're we're going to file a suit or or, you know, they think of justice that way, or they think of who gets who gets the money or that kind of thing. And using justice with climate is not new, but it is. Yeah, you know, since way back when, not going to talk about how far back. But what do you, what do you talk about when you mention that in your groups?
I'll just speak for myself. A really good example of that is as I've listened to BBC on COP twenty nine in the last couple of weeks is the whole issue that the developed countries such as the US use a huge amount or produce a huge amount of the greenhouse gases out there. And because of sea level rise or flooding, it's the lesser communities that are still developing that are the communities that are going to be hit hardest as a result of climate. And we want to take that principle and figure out how do we make sure that when we spend money to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our communities? For example, how do we make sure that it is we're doing it in a way that benefits everybody in the social, economic breadth of the community, not just those who may be able to afford it, but everybody else? So can people get to work through alternate means? Whether it's biking, walking, mass transit? Are there ways that you know, not everybody can go out and buy a fancy EV? So how, you know, we need to be thinking about how can we create a policies that will actually benefit the whole committee, community? Not just those of us that may be able to choose to do something different?
I guess I would just add to that the phrase that we need to be thinking about those who are, who will be, who who already are and will continue to be hurt first and worst. You know, and those are people without without means who have traditionally been underserved and overburdened. And so we need to be thinking about those and and have contributed, as Stephen said, the least basically to the problem, right? And so, yeah, I I echo what Stephen is saying.
And I would just add one other item to kind of make it pretty practical. There there are a lot of very good tools to help identify ways that in particular you can make investments towards environmental and climate justice. At the federal level, the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, has those criteria in there. The Climate Commitment has that. The state passed something called the HEAL Act a few years ago. All of those have ways to actually take this and turn it into a quantifiable thing. What percentage are going to communities that have disparate impacts from air pollutants? What percentages of funds are going to low-income communities or to other communities that are next to energy facilities? And so forth. And so I think the council can look to those resources to to help actually turn those into real substantive numbers.
Thank you.
Is it all right to take down the presentation now? Might make it easier to see everyone. Okay, so we can take the, there we go. Perfect. I saw Councilmember Jefferson's hand up. Did you still want to speak on something? And then I'll go to Councilmember Swartham.
Yes, Mayor, I did. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for your leadership on this. It's obvious that you really are passionate about this as we are. But my question to you is, so how are you working with our schools, with our educators? Because this is important to our youth. We had a sit-in last summer where they told us that this is important to them. So how are you engaging with our our youth?
So I can speak for Thurston Climate Action Team. We've had a long history of working with young people here in the community. And it actually have been a channel for some funding that one of our community members wanted to dedicate to to support for the the climate clubs at some of the high schools locally. We participated and supported actions that they've held and climate strikes and so forth at the Capitol Building. So, yeah, we've we've have a history of supporting those groups and and we think that that's that's a really important thing. I think we are now going to be having a planning discussion among our board here in January, coming up in a month or a couple of months. And and so that'll be one of the topics for discussion, too, is how how can we continue that connection and continue to support those kinds of activities? And I think working with teachers as well is very important because they have a very important role to play in in helping young people understand the reality of what's going on out there.
We have, one of our CA members is a teacher in the North Hurst School District. He's an elementary school teacher, fifth grade. And he's got that whole building doing all kinds of things that are helpful to the environment and to climate. And he's talking to me about how can we spread this district wide? And so what you need is somebody who has an interest, one of the teachers, science teachers, or someone who wants to, and then gather up other community members, and the kids are all
They're all in. They're all in. Thank you.
Sierra Club also has a one hundred percent clean schools program that we've been participating in locally, and in particular, I note the work that we and a number of other environmental groups have been doing towards a school bus electrification and getting the state funding as well as some of the federal funding going towards electrifying school buses.
Now, there's also a whole program on you've probably noticed in the last twenty years, people drive their kids to school and trying to send that way backwards a little bit on getting kids creating safe places where kids can walk or ride or roll to school instead of depending on their parents to get them there or the transportation, school transportation system.
Councilmember Swartham, and then I'll go to Councilmember Gaby.
Oh, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation, and I appreciate your work. I have been on this committee, I've learned so much, I really have, because I didn't really know that much before and been able to do my own work, but also learning from people like yourself that are sharing this information and is really important. It's frustrating when it's all about dollars. And so, because as you see, we have the energy audit, and it's going to be close to five million dollars for just the city of Tumwater to put, to correct those things that were identified on the audit. We recently had, did the transportation meeting, we had the different, we had inner-city transit and the TRPC had put together a high-capacity transportation meeting recently. And the fact that we know that we should have light rail all up and down connecting the Vancoovers, it should be done, but it's the sticker shock of it that we're going to blink at this point because it doesn't pencil out. We can't have it down here in Olympia because it doesn't pencil out. And some of these are, it's like the dollars and cents with these brave decisions that you have to make or you should make or we need to make if we're trying to get people off the roads. How are we going to do this? How are we going to accomplish this? And that's, that's a frustrating thing to see and to deal with. And but then I also look to it, personal responsibility, like challenging, you just said it, you know, not all of us can afford an EV, but what can we do that that can at least help move the need a little bit? Because we know we need to not have gas, we should have EVs, and we should have solar panels and different things as personal, as personal, on our own, without having the government tell us to do it. And I had Black Hills come in recently and to have a gas pump put in, it was going to be eighteen thousand dollars. So it's just, it's things like that, that you want to do the right thing, but how do you do the right thing? And then what can we do for our community to help them at least, you know, feel like they're doing some parts? feel like they're doing some parts of it that they feel like they at least are doing something to help with this effort, even though they may not be able to afford the EV or the solar, the solar panels, so.
Yeah, I, uh, have come to believe that, um, it's counterproductive to put this responsibility on individuals and because one of the messages that, uh, sorry, that that sends is, uh, it's, it's your fault, right? If I put it on individuals and it's, you know, and I think that's actually one of the messages that some of the, uh, corporate interests in this country are trying to portray, uh, to, to keep us, uh, uh, inactive and so, and, 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 and believing that we can't really do anything about it, right? And I think that's a false narrative and a false message. Um, I think we do have in this state, uh, we're, we're one of the uh, most regressive, uh, taxing systems that we have in the state, uh, throughout the coun- you know, compared to other states in the country. And, uh, so we've got a challenge there that ultimately I think, uh, we have to, uh, step up to and resolve. Uh, because I think it's ultimately, I mean, we, we need to think about, you know, who has really been driving this, this move over the past decades to fossil fuels and encouraging that and promoting that. And, and those are the folks that I think need to be held accountable. And I think, uh, recently we're seeing some moves in, in state of New York and other places to hold, uh, some of the fossil fuel companies more accountable, uh, for the things that need to be done to keep our people safe. So, uh,
Think another dangerous trend right now is all these big companies requiring everybody to go to work five days a week. I mean, it's just the opposite of what we should be doing. We sh- I mean, it, I understand the need to be there a couple, three times a week sometimes. Uh, we're just going to increase our greenhouse gas emissions if everybody has to go back to work. And so this, this, you know, Zoom meeting is a perfect example where we're reducing our emissions.
Councilmember Gaby.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I thank you guys for the, uh, presentation. So I don't, we, we talked about, um, climate justice. So I don't know if, and if you remember back in nineteen eighty-six, the Union, uh, Calvada industrial fiasco in Ca- in India. So, um, so that happened and, uh, India has gone, uh, from that period to become a a different type of, uh, industry. So in Nigeria, in Southern Nigeria, whole swath of the Niger Delta, the ecosystem livelihood are contaminated by, um, crude oil. Just been, I mean, been left and right into the ocean. And that is being done by Western, uh, oil company. So now coming back home to here in the, in the US, in the Ozark, uh, in Appalachia, in Appalachia, if I read, uh, or saw pictures, I believe, uh, six or seven years ago of, uh, streams and rivers turning, uh, red from PCP and what have you. So now we are going to be going back to that period as we embark on this new journey that we find ourselves in. So if we allow the polluters to pollute themselves, to, to police themselves, and here in the Northwest, we seem to be doing well, at least relatively okay, but it does impact us down here. Not to be speculative, how do you see us fearing in the next four years, given the climate that we are going to be embarking upon? Thank you.
Well, I think it's gonna be very challenging at the national level and it will certainly have an effect on our ability to do what we need to do. Uh, and in my mind, it reemphasizes the importance of local action. We, we can take action here as, as a city, uh, and as a county and as a region. And we are fortunate that in the state of Washington, we have some laws in place that protect our ability to take that action and actually that generate, uh, will, will continue to generate significant funding for us to be able to do these things that we can do here in the state of Washington and in our local communities. So, uh, yes, it will be very challenging, uh, and, uh, we will find ourselves, I, I think of, I, I don't mean to speak necessarily for the Tom- City of Tomwater, Tomwater City Council, but I think of the organization that I work with, Thirst and Climate Action Team, we're gonna have to continue to respond on, on two fronts. One is resisting the bad stuff. And the second is going forward with the good stuff, right? So we're gonna have to, we're gonna be very challenged and active on both fronts. It's gonna require um, attention and, and, and work, you know, lots of work. So, uh, but we're up to it. Uh, we just got a, a grant recently from the Department of Commerce through Climate Commitment Act funds to, uh, expand community involvement in the, um, comprehensive planning process and specifically focusing on the new climate chapter that will be included in Tomwaters and, and other cities and the counties, uh, comprehensive plans this year and next. So we'll be actively, you know, promoting more involvement in that and, and hopefully better, much better measures in those comprehensive plans and opportunities for, for good things to happen.
Yes, I would just add that we're fortunate in this state because, uh, uh, even if the new administration weakens some of the environmental laws, some of the state laws are more restrictive than the federal laws are. And so, for example, for clean water, the state has good standards in place, even if the federal backstop disappears. And, uh, but that doesn't mean we can sit on our hands, right? Because, um, you know, climate change, as you noted, Councilmember Kathy, uh, people tend to think it's not a big deal here, but it really is. The flooding you see coming down the Deschutes more often or the Chalas River, uh, the peak, the peak events we've had, the largest peak events, like five out of the last, out of the biggest, highest peak events in the Chalas have all been within the last ten years. And so it's already happening. Uh, sea level rise will continue to happen. And, um, our, well, our summers will be hotter, that means our waters will be warmer. That means we have more potential for disease and, and, uh, it's gonna be harder to re- rehabilitate fish habitat, things like that. So we, we've gotta, as Tom says, we have to stand point.
Councilmember Kathy. And then I'll go to Councilmember Von Haltz.
I just wanted to close my many times of speaking tonight by, by thanking you, uh, uh, again for coming, all three of you. Um, this is the kind of conversation that we need to have on, on a topic that makes a difference to everybody in our community in Tomwater that we've been voted to help look over and also in a whole regional thing to keep reminding ourselves. And also to realize when we hear something on the news, when it just now came to me, uh, Washington, um, this area, Seattle, Olympia, uh, won one of the awards during the summer of being the hottest place in the, you know, United States, uh, one day. So, I mean, one day that we, we win hot, uh, that, you know, kind of shook a few people into realizing that there was some change going on. And I just wanna say that when we talk about who needs to take responsibility and how we're gonna do it and so forth. I, I think it, it, it is on individuals to do what, what they can do. And, um, and in doing that, they're also, uh, doing what the city needs to do that, whether it has to do with what you're putting down your drains or how you're, you know, using everything that we as a city, um, control, so to speak. And, um, also as council members, if this, we voted that this was a an imminent crisis. We, we voted for that. We put that, uh, that's not exactly our language, but, um, that it was a crisis and we needed to do, do the right things. Well, I think for me, it's, it's my responsibility to help do those things. And to, to, to say things, bring things up, talk to people. And we have a lot to do with how we use the dirt and the trees and all of the natural resources of the, of our jurisdiction of Tomwater. And we, we have, we have some ways to go there, but I think we're, we're, we're trying and we're doing a good job. Um, and, you know, not everybody agrees on all of that, but it's not, it's not gonna do us any good in some big thing if we, like we mentioned before, cut down all the trees before we build a house. So we, we have, we have more responsibility for some of these things that we've talked about tonight, those of us that are sitting right here than other people in the city. And I think that I take that, um, very seriously. And I know many of my colleagues do. And we have staff people who are amazing. And so we just need to, um, you know, stay, stay as vigilant and, and be informed by people like you and by the discussions among us. And, um, and I appreciate you coming tonight and, and stimulating, uh, all of this. And, uh, keep it up, keep doing it. I don't know where all your traveling around, you know, speaking these wise words, but, um, uh, I sir support it. So thanks again. Tom and I are like broken records. We've been saying these same things for years, but it's better, isn't it, Tom?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, but you've, you've made, I mean, uh, you know, uh, Alyssa's doing some amazing work.
Yes.
Uh, you know, so we're very appreciative of your commitment and moving forward on this.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Von Haltz.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, gentlemen, for this presentation. Um, I, I really urge us as city council members in the city, um, we don't have a grant writer in our, in our, um, staffer, we talked about it last week at our city council meeting, are doing more with less. We all are. Um, but you mentioned you received a grant from the Department of Commerce and the Department of Commerce actually will do the grant writing for you. So I, I urge us to continue to think out of the box when it comes to these important measures and not let ourselves be held back by, um, what we do or what we might not have just yet. Um, there's work, there's workarounds that can be done and there's, um, partnerships that we can take advantage of. So this is important work and, and, and we can't wait.
Yeah, in that vein, I would say also echoing what Stephen said earlier is we, and we stand ready to help in any or all of those areas that, you know, if you, if you need some help with a grant or if you need some help with this or that, that we can help out with, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll do our best to step up and, uh, and help you out.
Wow, thank you.
Hey. Thank you. I think this is very informative and, and I know that, uh, other community members will be, uh, able to watch this presentation. So that will also be helpful to get the word out. So I really appreciate it and I'm sure we will continue to have conversations in the future. So thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right. Last thing on our agenda is the Mayor City Administrator Report, uh, and so City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things, council members. Um, first, um, you should look at in your email inbox, there were, um, I believe Brittany has sent you an email regarding the AWC Action Days, uh, which always occurs, um, each year during the legislative session. Um, it's taking place on February nineteenth and twentieth at Saint Martins University. Um, if you go to AWC's website and look under their events, you can kind of see what that is about. Um, it's really an opportunity for you all to get update on, um, AWC's legislative priorities, um, get, you know, hear news about some of the latest, uh, legislative issues and those types of things. Um, so Brittany was, uh, more than happy to, um, uh, get you registered for that if you're interested in attending and that registration is open now. So we wanna make sure you have that opportunity on your radar screen. Um, uh, in terms of city events, the, uh, next one that's upcoming is the Christmas lighting, which is on Saturday, December seventh, from one to five thirty PM here at City Hall and the fire station. That is a great event and lots of fun things planned. And uh, we got word today in our mayor manager meeting that, um, we have all new Christmas lights, um, LED, uh, efficient, uh, Christmas lights. And so, uh, Christmas lighting should be, um, a fun and new, um, uh, thing this year. Um, and then just a quick update on the remaining meetings of the year. So next year, or excuse me, next week, uh, Tuesday, we've got our last, uh, what we believe to be our last, uh, business meeting for the city council. It is a pretty full agenda. Um, Public Works Committee has a scheduled meeting on the fifth of December next week. Um, the, um, Public Health and Safety Committee doesn't have any agenda items for December, but the General Government Committee is expected to meet on the eleventh of December. And then we are planning to not have, as I said, the December seventeenth meeting. Right now, we don't need it. Um, but we do have the joint work session on December tenth with the Planning Commission. And so that's going to be a conversation both about the comp plan update as well as, um, uh, looking at the twenty twenty-five long-range planning work plan. So that's an important meeting. It is a hybrid format. Um, so if you're able to be in person, that would be great. Um, I believe most of the planning commissioners will be in person, um, but we could certainly, um, get that information to you too, if you're interested. So um, I think that's it unless there are any questions. Great, thank you.
Great. Um, so, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, wishing everyone a enjoyable time with family and friends for the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, we're getting to the end of the year really quickly here and it's, it's kind of surprising actually that we're already at the end of November and, oh my goodness. So, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to, uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your family and friends. And, uh, and then we will see everyone next Tuesday. Uh, and so with that, I will adjourn the meeting and, uh, everyone have a great evening. Thanks.